Okay, let's call to order the virtual City of Milton Common Council meeting Tuesday, November 16th, 2021 at 6:00 PM. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, November 12th at Hometown Ace Hardware, Milton Pigly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda? Done?
Second.
Devin and his bros. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, anyone opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. Fudge of allegiance. Over the shoulder of Inga is the flag. And we can just say this all together. I pledge allegiance
To the flag
of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. I knew there was gonna be a day when I would forget all the words to that because I was distracted. Public comments. Does anybody have any public comments that they want to share right now? Or public comments regarding an item later on the agenda? Inga, is there anyone in the waiting room?
No, there's no one in the waiting room.
Okay, let's move on then to the next item. Mayoral proclamation, Family Caregiver Month. And here's to all those caregivers out there. Whereas, Wisconsin's family caregivers and direct care workforce provide critical services that promote the well-being and enhance the quality of life of our state's most vulnerable populations, including children, individuals with disabilities, and older adults. And whereas, family caregivers perform a variety of complex tasks, including bathing, dressing, medication management, coordinated services, financial assistance, and various medical or nursing tasks. And whereas, in addition to providing care for their loved ones, many family caregivers struggle to meet their own personal and occupational needs, as well as the needs of others in their households. And we recognize that they also require support to stay healthy. And whereas, the direct care workforce in our state is facing a shortage that negatively impacts the ability of Wisconsin's families to obtain the care they need with a significant number of caregiving positions going unfilled each year. And whereas, even in the context of the healthcare workforce shortage, compounded by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic, Wisconsin's family caregivers have gone above and beyond to serve our state's most vulnerable individuals over the past year and a half, often providing care without any breaks and putting their own health, employment, and finances on the back burner. And whereas, resources and services to support family caregivers are available statewide through the Wisconsin Department of Health and of Health Services and through local aging and disability resource centers. And on this occasion, the state of Wisconsin reaffirms its commitment to expanding these supports and to ensuring that all Wisconsinites who depend on the services of family caregivers have access to affordable, quality care that allows them to live with dignity and respect. And whereas, this month provides all Wisconsinites with the opportunity to celebrate caregivers across our state for their innumerable contributions and sacrifices in service to the health and well-being of friends and family members. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim November as Family Caregiver Month. And I'll sign that, the 16th day of November. In addition to that, we have a proclamation for Small Business Saturday, which will be November 27th, 2021. Whereas, the City of Milton celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. According to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 31.7 million small businesses in the United States. They represent 99.7% of firms with paid employees. And they are responsible for 65.1% of net new jobs created from 2000 to 2019. And whereas, small businesses employ 47% of the employees in the private sector in the United States, 88% of US consumers feel a personal commitment to support small businesses in the wake of the pandemic. And 92% of small business owners have pivoted the way they do business to stay open during the pandemic. And whereas, 97% of Small Business Saturday shoppers recognize the impact they can make by shopping small, 85% of them also encouraged friends and family to do so too. And whereas, 56% of shoppers reported they shopped online with a small business on Small Business Saturday in 2020. And more than 50% of consumers who reported shopping small endorsed a local business on social media or shopped at a local business because of a social media recommendation. And whereas, advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim November 27th, 2021 as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. And I will sign this, the 16th of November, 2021. All right, approval of the consent agenda.
So Mugg?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. All right, I am really excited for this. Considering we just did our Small Business Saturday proclamation, we now have a presentation by the Janesville Area Convention and Visitors Bureau regarding the Milton Area Tourism Consortium.
Thank you, and thank you for having me come present. Please let me know if you have any trouble hearing me. I'm also gonna share screens, so if you're not seeing what I share, please let me know. I'll go ahead and share a screen now. Hopefully, you can all see what I'm presenting. And if you have questions as I go, feel free to ask them, or we can do a set of questions and suggestions at the end too. But I have to say, what a pleasure it is to work with the Milton group. When we started this three years ago, we didn't quite know how it would work, and it's been such a pleasure. My team and I just truly enjoy working with everyone in Milton, and it's been such a pleasure. And I don't say that on every project we work with, but I can sincerely say that here, that it is just a pleasure to work with this group in Milton. If we took just an overview, for some of you, this you're very familiar with. For others, it may be new. But our partnership consists of the City of Milton, the Milton Area Chamber of Commerce, and us, the Janesville Convention and Visitors Bureau. We started in 2019, so this is our third year of the partnership. And it really just came together. We had been doing some consulting, and we had a reach out from both the city and the chamber that said, hey, we're looking for more, you know, experience in tourism marketing. And we were glad to step forward and fill that role. We also, this past year, did a contract with the City of Edgerton and the Edgerton Tourism Commission. So we're providing that for a second Northern Wisconsin community. The contract is an annual renewable contract, and it has a $14,000 investment that's being made, split evenly between the City of Milton and the Milton Area Chamber. So it's $7,000 for each of the partners. If you look at the goals of the partnership, those remain very much the same over the past three years. For the City of Milton, we're really looking for successful commerce and satisfied, engaged residents. We know that what's good for the visitor, whether it be attractions, restaurants, special events, it's also good for the resident. It keeps them engaged and happy. It helps relocation of both residents and businesses. So we know that what we do is also good for our residents. For the Milton Chamber, they were looking for a successful draw for new and existing commerce in the community. For us, we're looking for that strong tourism draw for Northern Rock County and to create successful tourism businesses and satisfied visitors. We know that visitors to the community don't know where lines are between communities. They just want to have a great experience. They don't know when they've crossed a border. So creating that strong Northern Rock County tourism product is really a goal of ours. Our marketing campaign goals were really to create awareness of Milton attractions, retailers, restaurants, and events to establish and grow our social media hubs. We have Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, and we did just add Pinterest to that to reach an audience outside of Rock County. We feel that people within Rock County are really familiar with the Milton area, so we wanted to draw outside of Rock County. They also create more economic impact. They're gonna stay longer and spend more if they're from outside the county. We wanted to drive and deliver relevant business traffic to Milton attractions, businesses, and events. And then during the pandemic, we added, and we've kept that support local component, calling out local businesses and reminding people that they're there and that they have that influence in the community. And then to provide safe social distancing alternatives. So a lot of outdoor activities that enjoy people to, no matter where we're at with pandemic and COVID numbers, to still be able to come to the Milton community and enjoy an experience here in Milton. Our primary target markets, and I'm sorry, gentlemen, but often women are those decision makers for travel. We know that women are often the ones planning the trip, making those decisions. So we do target our marketing to them. We know Milton is well-designed for couples and families traveling to the community. We look at the Northern Illinois market, Rockford, Chicago. We look at Southern Wisconsin, Dubuque, Iowa has been nice for us. And we did, towards the end of this year, dip our toe into that Madison market just a little bit. We know that market is a little bit cluttered for us, but a lot of things have changed in the past year and a half with travel. So we're doing a little bit of reach out to the Madison-Dane County market also. Our marketing strategies, we deliver daily social media posts. If you are a Facebook user and we're not currently following Visit Milton, please do so and share and engage with our posts. We have social media advertising and event booths. So that's paid advertising, which allows us to just boost that presence. We have our high-volume printed brochure, and we place that at the I-90 Travel Center. So that's just a tripod brochure about Milton. We've updated and enhanced that tourism page of the Visit Milton website. We now have a master calendar of events that we share with the City of Milton, and we've just recently moved that or in the process of moving that to host it on the city's website. We have photography, billboards, print ads, travel writers, influencers, and then some printed and digital travel guides and itineraries. We like to create itineraries so someone can literally see how they could spend an entire day in Milton. So we create for them an experience beginning to end, and all of those are available on the website. Marketing overview, again, the total campaign investment was about $14,000, and we divided that into two campaigns. We do spring, summer campaign, and a fall/winter campaign. Our spring/summer campaign, we had 2,000 in paid advertising. We promoted trails, outdoor activities, and some of the signature events. And we did that through Facebook and Instagram. We know our results from that. What's nice about social media advertising is you get really specific results back. We know that there were over a million people that saw the ad. It reached their phone, their laptop, or they were viewing Facebook and social media. And of those people that saw the ad, over 2,000 either liked the post or engaged with it. So they clicked through to a link, or they signed up for a promotion. They had some kind of engagement with the post. For our fall/winter campaign, we did 3,500 in paid advertising, and that again was promoting outdoor fun, our attractions, your wonderful mix of wineries, restaurants, shopping, events, and then the holiday season. That again had social media. We don't have a lot of results because that campaign is still going. We've just launched some of the holiday. We did that Madison reach out through Bravo Magazine, and we did a co-op print and email with Bravo. And we co-op'd that ad with Janesville, so it was a full-page ad, and we took a portion, and Milton took a portion. Bravo distributes about 20,000 copies in the Dane County market and beyond, and they have an email subscription of about 5,500. So those people all saw that ad. We also did a Travel Wisconsin co-op custom email with the Department of Tourism, and that goes out to 167,000 Travel Wisconsin subscribers. So that had nice results for us. And we paid to bring in some travel influencers. These are writers who we pay to bring into the community and pay for their visits while they're here. We brought in Martinique Lewis in mid-July, and she is an award-winning diversity and travel consultant and president of the Black Travel Alliance. We hosted a wonderful event at the Milton House where we brought in all of the Northern Rock County black business owners and talked about them from a hospitality standpoint. What are you experiencing? What roadblocks do you have? And we really got some great feedback from Martinique and her visits and that group. And we'll regroup with them in the spring and talk again with that hospitality industry that is black-owned. We brought in Sarah, traveled with Sarah in early August, and she's the co-owner of the Midwest Travel Network. And we brought in Melanie Pittman of Where I May Roam on those same August dates. So those travel writers come into the community, experience things. They post on social media live while they're there, and they do some written follow-up. So we'll see some things from all of these writers over the next six months that we'll promote out. And I can follow up with links to the council with all of those articles and what we've seen so far. We continued our I-3990 campaign, and with the construction almost completed, this may be the final year that we do that particular marketing. But our goal was to remind people traveling on I-90 that you can still get to the Northern Rock County area, still get to Beloit. So we paid to have the Milton pieces in the Beloit Travel Center. And that's a paid position because it's in the overnight brochure rack. So if you're stopping in that Beloit Travel Center at 2:00 in the morning, whatever time of day, you can always access those guides. And on average, we get about 2,000 brochures distributed at that location. And they did remain open throughout the pandemic. That section of the Travel Center was open. Additional marketing, we did the placement in the Rock County Tourism Guide for Milton. We produced some updated brochures and itineraries. We did an updated restaurant guide, calendar of events, and some updated itineraries. We also work with the Department of Tourism to bring in a professional photography session. So you're seeing some of those images now, and we've shared those with individual attractions and places that we've visited. And that real high-quality photography is so important in all the marketing that we do. So our total 2021 results to date, and we're only, you know, three-quarters through the year. But social media followers, we saw just over 4,000 followers on Facebook, over 150 on Twitter, 800 with Instagram, which is nice because it's relatively new for the Milton community, and 162 on Pinterest. And that is again a campaign we just started. We also know from Facebook what our user profile looks like. We know about 80% of those are female, 24% are from Rock County, and then 76% are from outside of Rock County. And we know 86% of those that are from outside of Rock County are from Rockford in Northern Illinois. So there's a nice drivable distance for people to come and visit the Milton community. And that's kind of the wrap-up of the formal presentation I had, but now is where I'm excited to get your feedback, your questions, and your thoughts and ideas because you are truly the experts on the Milton community and what is happening there and what there is to see and do. And I can back up to any slides if you'd like to take a further look or share any additional information.
Does anybody on the council have any questions or comments? Well, I can say that I really enjoyed the presentation, and I love hearing about all the different things that you brought to Milton. And I participated in one of the travel influencers' luncheons and the tours, and the tour at the Milton House, and it was really a great experience. So I love the idea of bringing the travel influencers here. And it was, it's exciting to see what they say on Facebook and all the nice things. And I think it's just, it's a nice touch that's newer to what we've been doing in the past. So I really like that a lot.
And all of them had incredibly positive feedback because you're not only finding out about the attractions and the places they visit, but their customer service experience. And that can sometimes be scary for us when we bring those writers in, but their customer service experiences in Milton were outstanding.
I don't have a question, but just kind of a comment. You know, as Christine pointed out, we started this kind of idea a couple of years ago. And, you know, for a long time, there was a tourism committee that was made up of citizen members, business owners, members of the chamber. And it was a great group that was incredibly active. But we all continued to struggle with, how do we know it works? You know, we didn't have the mechanism or the expertise or the acumen to understand that if we put a billboard here, what does that really get us? So joining forces with the Janesville Area Visitors and Convention Bureau allowed us to have that opportunity to work with an expert, a group of experts who could answer those questions for us. They could answer that question of, how do we know it's working? Because they have a robust set of tools available to them that can measure those metrics and work with Facebook in a way that we just didn't, we weren't able to work with social media in a way that we were able to engage travel writers. That was something that was not on anybody's radar. We didn't have that ability to understand that or even where to go to get that. So it has been a very successful endeavor. You know, folks who have been around me a long time know that one of my favorite sayings is, "It is not government's job to ensure that businesses are successful, but it is government's job to create an environment in which businesses can succeed." And I think that this is another example of that. When you look up and down both of our downtowns and see zero vacancies, there are a number of contributing variables that go into how that happens. But I would say that this venture with the Janesville Area Visitors and Convention Bureau is one of those variables, and probably one of those variables that has a high degree of saliency towards that goal of having zero vacancies. We see new, unique boutique shops popping up and staying, which is kind of new for us too. We see, you know, folks coming in that have never been here before, that are staying and communicating that outward. And, you know, that stuff doesn't, some of that stuff happens by accident, but not always. And it's always good when you can have the ability. You can only control what you can control. And I think this is one of those situations in Christine and her team are certainly renowned throughout the state for what they do. And clearly, Edgerton, you know, saw the same benefits that were being provided to us and joined forces. And I think that that is absolutely great, that we can coordinate on a regional level and show the outside region how great not only Milton is, but Rock County is. And, you know, it's a testament to, I think, a work that was well thought out and well-conceived.
Great collaborative process, Larry.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I really like the bi-local addition, the emphasis. I think that's really important and exciting because when you think about the area we live in, there is almost anything you wish to find, you can find in our geographic area or surrounding this locale in Rock County, if you will. And it's just good to remind the local people that, hey, all the things you're looking for are here. It's just a matter of directing them to the right shops, the right businesses, to get that service or that product that they're looking for. So I think it's really important. So thank you.
Yes. And just to go along with that, I think that, you know, and we've said it before, that when people come, they don't just come to see the Milton House or any one place. And so this gave a broader opportunity to, when people come to the area, they have many things that they can do outside of Milton if they are going to Janesville to shop. What are the, what are the opportunities there if they go camping? There are many other things that they can do across Southern Wisconsin. And it draws their interest to a variety of different things. So thank you.
This is one of my favorite presentations at the end of the year.
Thank you. I do feel pressure now to for next year.
And please thank Susan for all of her hard work too. You guys both just do an awesome job in helping us with our tourism and everybody else down in this part of the state, and we are the gateway. So we have a lot to offer, and thank you for putting that out there.
And thank you for recognizing the team. I may be the one giving the report and signing the paperwork, but Susan Mountain, our marketing director, and Ashley McCallum is our social media manager, and she manages all of your social media accounts. So it's my team that's doing the real work. I just happened to be presenting before you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Anyone else before we let Christine go?
All right, thanks, Christine. You're welcome to stay for team building. It's about Thanksgiving, shockingly.
I might step hope, step out and go take care of my family, so thank you.
Oh, okay. We'll let you do that.
All right.
Thank you again for presenting tonight, and have a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you, you too.
All right, okay, so we have more exciting presentations. No pressure, y'all. On the 2022 City of Milton Annual Budget.
All right, I'm gonna see if I can be as successful in the screen share as Christine was. Can everybody see that okay?
Yes.
All right. Okay, so this is our budget, our 2022 budget. As you notice, potentially, on the top of the page, it no longer says draft as this is the potential budget that could be approved this evening if the council sees fit. The good news is, is the budget, the draft presentation that we provided a couple of weeks ago has not really changed all that much since the last time we spoke. We do have all of our numbers in from the state now, and we are in good, good shape that we, if we wanted to adopt the budget tonight after the public hearing, we could. But if we wanted to wait another week or so, we could do that as well. But I wanted to make you aware of that opportunity. In a review of kind of what the highlights are of this budget, as previously noted, expenses in this budget are decreasing. I don't know that I can think of a time in the nine budgets I've done that we can say that, but this one is certainly the case. We'll only be collecting roughly $3,000 more in taxes in 2022 than we did in 2021. It's a very small amount of increase in tax collection to continue to maintain the service levels that we are. We once again saw tremendous growth in our community. $32.6 million in equalized value. That is a humongous number. To put that into comparison, almost the entire TIF 6 has a value of $36 million. So you're seeing our city grow almost by an entire TIF district in just one year. So that is impressive, and those numbers continue to trend upward every year. I think last year, that number was 27, and that was an amazing number. And the year before that, I think it was 23, and that was an amazing number. So we're trending in the right direction, and that's, that's good news. And certainly, 2022 looks to be headed in that direction as well. We're projecting our tax rate to decrease by about 15%, which is also the largest decrease in taxes I think I've seen since I've been here. The city's portion of that tax rate itself is gonna go down by almost $1.50. That is a huge decrease in the city's portion of the overall tax rate. And once again, we do not have any levy-supported borrowing in this budget. This is just to show illustratively that expenses will be decreasing next year. As you saw, last year, they increased by 1.5. And if this table had another column, I think the year before that, it was 3.3 increase. So the fact that they're decreasing is a good anomaly. So what does this all mean? The city's proposed budget will levy to the max, which is 3.4 million, but that only constitutes an increase of about 3,000 over last year's. This budget does qualify for the state-imposed levy limit cap and qualifies for the expenditure restraint program. There is no reduction is necessary at this time to qualify for either of those. It's a balanced budget that qualifies for both of those state-imposed caps. To look at just the levy in and of itself, this was where I noted that it's increasing by $2,999. Really, where that is coming from is actually property tax, non-property tax revenue is actually decreasing. This is always a little funky to look at this in this way, but our employee relations are decreasing. Employee relations basically means wages and benefits. And our operational expenses are decreasing by $25,000. So what, what you could say is that, oh, well, then why isn't it decreasing by $36,000? And it's because our non-property tax revenue increase, what is denoted by a negative symbol, it is an increase on a revenue side, is going up slightly. There's been a lot of conversation leading up to this discussion regarding capital items. So again, I kind of wanted to highlight those. As you may recall, when we looked at this budget presentation a few weeks ago, we needed to trim this by $25,000. How we were able to balance that, as you may recall, you'll see on the next slide, there was a pedestrian crossing sign right up here between these two items that had a $30,000 price tag. We moved that down into the unfunded, but kind of the wish list item, and increased the speed limit meters by 5,000. So that was able to balance it out. So we reduced it by 30 when we only needed to reduce it by 25, but added 5,000 based on some of those estimates we received from Baxter and Woodman. So the capital budget is now balanced in this proposed budget. Here are the items that are, that were kind of Here are the items that are, that were kind of li- listed as priorities from, uh, the, the city. Staff that did not make it into this budget, and this is where the pedestrian signs appears. So what we have done in years past is, once we kind of get through the year twenty twenty-one and we're into that February, March area and we kind of see where everything settles out, once all checks have been cashed. And if there is residual funds, this is generally the first place we go to see, okay, if there are residual funds. Is there anything that we left off that list that really? That we really could fund. So this is where we would look back in that February or March time, if that is a possibility. At this time, I'm not sure what that number will be or if there will be a number. It certainly will be less than it has been in years past. But we always want to kind of keep this list on our forefront as we approach that discussion in a few months. These are the non-general fund capital items. These are all the items that are funded that we have planned for twenty twenty-two that will not be funded by tax levy. Meaning they will be funded through other revenue sources such as utility. Water utility, wastewater utility, stormwater utility, or through the wheel tax. So as you can see, we're still have planned for Woodcrest Lane and One Sidewalk and Chapel Drive and One Sidewalk as part of those. Non-general fund capital items. And we have kept the twenty-five thousand dollars in the sidewalk repair fund for next year as well. And we may talk about that in a little bit. Here's just a different view of that to show where the funding sources come from for each one of those infrastructure projects. So you can see there's a total of two million dollars worth of projects that are, we expect to complete next year. With the vast majority of those dollars coming from. Our utility funds. As always, we talk about the nonprofit contributions. Uh, we have kept those level funded. As we have in previous years, the only one that, uh, has changed is the Milton Fourth of July went from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. And as always, certainly if there are, uh, additional considerations that the council wants to make. We can make those changes either tonight on the floor of the council meeting. Or we can bring this back at a future meeting, but just wanted to kind of remind folks of of where, uh, funding for those. Often talked about items stands in this budget.
Al?
Yes.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Yep.
Back a couple of slides, you. Were getting, uh, the question was. Lift station number six, where is that located?
Mark, can you help us with that one if you're still on here?
Yeah, so there's two stations scheduled to be replaced. Um, one is at Elm Street and one is, um, at Golden Lane and John Paul. And I believe six is Golden Lane and John Paul.
I believe you're right, yeah. I think I saw Linda say thank you, so. So as always, at every, every year that I've done this, we always have kind of the same goals. We want to have a balanced budget. We want to stay within levy limits because we have to. We want to qualify for expenditure restraint, which is not a requirement of the state, but we always want to do that because there is that added. Expenditure restraint bonus that you get in the preceding year if you do qualify for it. And this budget does do that. We never really want to see reductions in service. Uh, there's a level of service that our community has come to expect and we want to maintain that for as long as humanly possible, so long as budgets allow. This budget has no reductions in service. And. For at least the next foreseeable, foreseeable. Two or three years, we would like to see no new levy supported borrowing and this budget maintains that as well. The only unknown, and actually this is now unknown, uh, since this was printed, is the Rock County tax levy. We do have that and I'm going to bring that up for you real. I'm going to bring that up right here. We do know the Rock County's tax levy now, uh, which is why this is no longer highlighted. So let me zoom in on this. I'm sure this is pretty hard to see. So what this shows us. Is that the overall mill rate in the city of Milton. We don't know the first, uh, dollar tax credit and lottery credit yet, but those are not really germane to, uh, what we're, we're doing here tonight. But what we do know is that the overall mill rate for folks who live in the city of Milton. They're going to see a four dollar and twenty-six cent decrease in their overall tax rate. The city of Milton's portion of that will go down by a dollar forty-six. So each taxing jurisdiction, if you live in the city of Milton, has had a decrease in their overall. Tax rate this year. So that is great news for property owners, business owners, uh, and folks who are, who are living and working here in Milton. So that unknown is no longer an unknown as of this morning. Just a quick recap budget takeaways. We're going to see a greater than fifteen percent decrease in our portion of the tax rate. We're going to maintain our current service levels. Compensation for all employees is the same across the board. And as you may remember, there are some of our folks who are represented through a union contract. And the rest of the, uh, employees of the city Milton are not. Our goal is to always have those two units of employees mirror each other, but it's not always possible. This budget was able to do that. So that's always good news. There is no percentage change on pre-insurance premiums. This is the first year that, uh, that I've worked here that we have seen a zero percent increase on our insurance premiums that didn't. Come with the change in plan design. We maintain the capital infrastructure funding levels. And general fund expenditures will decrease by nearly half a percent. We do qualify for state expenditure restraint and levy limits. And this budget has no new tax levy supported borrowing component. So that concludes my presentation, but I can certainly bring it back up if there are questions about any specific slide that I presented.
I just want to, I went back and looked, it is actually the Elm Street lift station that's first on the list and then. The second one would be Golden. Golden and John Paul. They're both being designed concurrently, but. Lift station six is Elm Street.
Um, so. Counsel, do you want to comment on it? And then we'll move on to the public hearing. Or.
Pretty sweet.
We usually. Let's just go to the public hearing.
Yep.
Let's just do that. Okay, so, um, I will officially open the public hearing on the two thousand and twenty-two City of Milton Annual Budget. And, um, Inga, can you see if there's anybody in the waiting room right now that may be waiting to get into comment?
I don't see anybody in the waiting room.
Okay. All right. And, um, I think Mary Ann is here on, um. Uh, number twelve. So. Unless Mary Ann, you want to comment on the budget, this will be your time to do it.
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. Um, I do not see anyone else from the public on the Zoom meeting and there is not anybody in the waiting room. So I am going to go ahead and I'm going to close the public hearing portion. And let's go to counsel then. And see if you have any questions or comments. And I'm just going to go around like I usually do and I'm going to start with Bill.
Um. Great job. Uh, you know, I, I think outstanding, uh, outstanding budget. I, I think there's always the, uh. Concern about the nonprofits and you can cut that. Two different ways. I actually liked the way we handled it last year. And, uh, which would, uh, I think suggest, uh, leaving it as it is in the budget. Uh, and then, uh, reassessing whether or not, uh, additional funds might be available later in the year.
Thanks, Bill. Devon?
I, I will agree with Bill regarding the nonprofits, but other than that, I. Don't have anything else. Uh, good work as always.
Thanks, Devon. Teresa?
Yes, I would agree, uh, that we need to take a strong look at whether or not. Any of them can apply for the federal funding. I don't know when we're going to start looking at that. But I, I do need, or I do feel we need to, to look at that clearly to see if they. Can fill in through that. But I, I think some of their needs are legitimate under the circumstances of the past two years.
Yeah, there's, um. There's still some pending legislation at the national level about more flexibility with those, so.
Yeah, something just came out a day or so ago.
Yeah, yeah. So. Um, definitely want to start creating our process for that and hope, hopeful that the. The national level gets, gets their procedures in place, too. Thanks, Teresa. Ryan?
I don't really have much more to add. Um. I like the way the budget is at the moment. So I think we proceed as is.
Thanks, Larry.
Yeah, I don't. I'd, I'd like to offer for consideration and if we can. I'd like to increase the, uh, Fourth of July to, to ten thousand also. To make everyone even in the process, if we can afford to do that in the budget. Uh, I think it would be valuable. And then I think we should look at next year. Reviewing our policies about. Amounts and how we determine how much we'll allocate to each nonprofit. Again, I remind us there's other nonprofits in our community. That might be willing to come forth. Or might want to come forth and with requests. Um, and. We have to be able to deal with that if that does happen. So. Thank you. Otherwise, I, I'm happy with the budget. I think it's wonderful. So thank you.
And Linda?
I know that there were things that we didn't get in the budget and I too would have liked to have. More funding directed towards our non, our nonprofits. I think that being able to look at this once things have settled down is, is the way to go and. I think the budget looks really good. You, everybody did a great job.
Thanks. I agree. Um, I know this is a. We've had, um, lots of. Opportunities to adapt and change and lots of different changes. And I think that. That staff has done a really nice job, both, uh. Staff that have been here and the new staff that have joined our organization. They've worked really hard. To put together this budget and I'm really proud of them. And all of our staff and our department heads are, our leadership team is really. It's been doing a great job. And I can't speak highly enough of them and I, I appreciate how challenging this year has been. Last year has been. So we're, we're, there's a, there, there was a lot of stress that none of us really. Knew how to deal with the past couple of years and we're, you know, we're still continuing to deal with COVID. So, um, I just, you know, want everyone to know how much I personally appreciate everyone, so. Um, so right now. You have an opportunity, you can pass the budget. Oh, Linda?
I was just going to ask you if you wanted a motion.
Yeah, so. We didn't have any, um, anybody from the public. Here that raised any concerns. So you can pass it tonight. And then when, and then we wouldn't have to have. Al, will you just fill us in that? Because I can't remember off the top of my head, one of the schedules we had talked about. And then Ryan, I saw that you had your hand up, too.
Yeah, we had talked about potentially having a special meeting either next week, Tuesday. Which would be the twenty-third or the following Tuesday, which would be the thirtieth. But those would only be as necessary. So again, if the council would like to adopt the budget tonight, they can. There are no numbers that we are waiting for from the state that would have, it would impact the budget. So the council could choose to do that or they could wait and, 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 uh, schedule one of those special meetings on the twenty-third or the thirtieth or any other date with that, for that matter.
So what is that, that absolute deadline that we want to have our budget passed by?
It has to be adopted, um. By the, what is it? The, Kelsey, do you know? Is it the second Tuesday of December or something like that?
Yeah, the second Monday or the second Tuesday, one of them in December.
It's usually within the first ten days of December. It has to be adopted so the county can print the bills and it can go out.
Yeah, well, and, I mean. If there isn't a reason to wait, I know sometimes the public would. Like to know the budget sooner rather than later, but that is totally the, the council's decision. And Ryan, you had had your hand up before, so I wanted to check in with you.
Kind of had two comments, uh, one in a ways towards, uh, Larry was saying. Uh, about four years ago, I think we had an ad hoc committee look at the nonprofits and things like that. That's what came up with our policy. And part of that, too, is it's not a closed group as to who can get it. Any nonprofit can, uh, apply for that. So it's already open and available to any nonprofit that wanted to apply. It's just those are the only ones that actually apply. So that's just what I'm coming, I wanted to add into that.
But it's the funding, the total amount available might become challenging.
It might be, but it depends on if other groups actually apply, but we've only had.
Well.
Two or three at any given year.
I don't think a lot of groups realize they can apply. I think they think it's limited to a number. A certain number of organizations, so. That's.
Well, yeah. I can tell you that for whatever reason, the Fourth of July. Did, did somehow found, find out because we haven't funded. An increase for them. You know, in a long time, but certainly to take that into consideration. Um, and I do, uh, do believe like once we. Establish our process, uh, to look at that extra funding that we have. Probably more, um, nonprofits. Will apply for that. And I do think there's been some. Changes in leaderships at nonprofits too that, um. Folks are adjusting to. So, um, and we can, uh, certainly, um. Put on another agenda item. If people want to go back again and redo the policies for nonprofits. I mean, I'm not opposed to that, but. That could be for a further agenda discussion. So. If we go back to the budget.
Yeah, from a, from a historical context, when I first came in two thousand and fourteen, there was five nonprofits that were being funded. In that, I guess, in that category within our budget. And then, uh, it, it's been kind of whittled down to, to these three now. For whatever reason that is, yeah.
I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-one. Approval of the budget for twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Okay. There is a motion to adopt the resolution or. A motion for resolution adopting the two thousand twenty-two City of Milton Annual Budget, Resolution two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-one. And there is a second. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bye.
Is there anyone opposed? Okay. The budget is adopted. Congratulations. There's a two thousand and twenty-two City of Milton budget.
You've done that.
So good idea. So does that mean we don't have to meet next Tuesday? Is, uh, is that what this means, Al?
Well, we still have the, uh, the, the five bugles discussion, but that's, that, that's only for anybody who wants to come. So no, we don't need to next week.
So some of us will be meeting next week, but it's not a mandatory meeting to adopt the budget. All right. Okay, so. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action regarding a conditional use permit for a home business occupancy located at one sixty-seven Romar Drive. And we did have this on plan commission and we did have. The public hearing, commission.
Yes, Mary Ann Knudsen, uh, has requested a conditional use permit for a home business occupancy for her home located at one sixty-seven Romar. Her intent is to remodel the interior of her home to allow for a one-chair salon. To be present within her residence. Based on ordinance requirements, she does meet all ordinance requirements for a home business occupancy. Um, as the mayor has noted, there was a public hearing held at the plan commission level earlier today. There was no members of the public spoke. The city was contacted by one, uh, property owner who was notified of the public hearing, who just simply requested more information. Once we provided that information, they were satisfied and had no objection to the request. The plan commission approved the request unanimously with no conditions, no additional conditions on it. So based on those three factors, the fact that, uh, they meet ordinance requirement. There was no, uh, public objection and the, uh, plan commission forwarded a favorable recommendation. The city administration would also. Recommend approval of the home. recommend approval of the home business occupancy as requested for one sixty-seven Romar Drive.
All right, so uh, Bill?
Yeah, I would move approval of the conditional use permit.
I'll say that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the conditional use permit. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Congratulations, Mary Ann, and you are welcome to stay for team building too.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night and have a happy day.
You too.
All right, discussion and possible action regarding a proposal from Five Bugles designed for a feasibility study for space needs analysis.
So as uh, noted in the memo, as part of the ongoing kind of conversations with the surrounding townships and our, our potential future petition to the Edgerton uh, Fire Protection District, one item that has kind of come up uh, that the city has been amenable to is to engage with Five Bugles design to have a space needs analysis. Ultimately, what that means is outlined in their proposal is that Five Bugles would look at the current Edgerton um, fire department and its facilities, look at the known future east side fire department that will be constructed on East High Street and see what would be required for a future Milton West station. Um, in discussions with the four uh, townships that we are uh, potentially partnering with and with the Edgerton Fire Protection District Administration, we all agreed that this was a step in the process that is going to be needed sooner rather than later. Um, it's not something that uh, that kind of came out of the thin air, but uh, really understood that yes, we're gonna have to answer these questions at some point. And it, we all believed that it probably would strengthen our combined petition if we had these answers going into that process. So Five Bugles at the behest of uh, the Edgerton Fire Protection District Administration has put forth this proposal to the City of Milton in which they will conduct that needs assessment and again, look at the entire network of what could be the future Edgerton uh, Fire Protection District and the three stations that are being talked about with the potential fourth in Newville to make sure that we are right sizing our expectations, not only from a service provision standpoint, but also from a cost standpoint. What is baked into the budget that has been presented on multiple occasions to the city council and to the other overlying or to the other uh, uh, petitioning municipalities is roughly a three point five million dollar station. All parties agree that that is probably very likely going to be the number, but we all thought it probably made sense to have that further sharpened and galvanize that number. So as uh, as a show of kind of good faith and further commitment to this process, uh, the City of Milton uh, has brought forth this uh, proposal or the city administration has brought forth this proposal for the council's consideration. If the council does agree, I alluded to the meeting next week Tuesday a few moments ago that I know you're all aware of. There will be uh, kind of a workshop meeting next week Tuesday evening with Five Bugles that will be kind of run by Five Bugles at city call in the council chambers in which they will have, it'll be an interactive kind of uh, workshop discussion of what the needs would be if all municipalities were to join together and what would that network of facilities look like? Uh, and then that would become, again, that would kind of become baked into the future petition in intergovernmental agreement. So this is the proposal that Five Bugles has put forth and uh, if approved, uh, we would move forward with that workshop next week.
So, um, only thing that I would add is just um, a note of appreciation for everybody that was involved with um, assisting the city and getting, you know, Five Bugles scheduled and um, getting this um, proposal in front of you. As you know that, you know, like the other townships have already gone through this process with Five Bugles. And when we decided uh, that it would be in the City of Milton's best interests to look more um, closely at a consolidation with um, the Edgerton Fire District. Uh, we had some work to do to get caught up uh, with, with what they had already done and that um, been working on over the months. And this is um, one of those things for us to complete and have have a meeting with all the towns and get their feedback too regarding this um, this facility known as the Milton, the West facility. So uh, just a little bit more kind of background and detail on that. And this is um, this is something that I personally supported uh, in having the City of Milton uh, participate. And so I will um, just call on people if they have questions or concerns. Ryan?
No questions or concerns this time.
Thanks, Linda.
Yes, actually I do have a couple of questions. Um, scope of work on page two. Uh, the team is gonna make one presentation to the elected officials. Is that what's happening next week or is this something that's going to the, is this for the council? The Fire Commission or the newly acquired soon-to-be district?
Right, goo- good question. No, the, the, the neck, the meeting scheduled for next week would not be the presentation. Um, in, in conversations with Chief Pickering and perhaps uh, Anissa's had an update since my last conversation with Randy, uh, that presentation um, has yet to be scheduled. We talked about hopefully trying to combine it with that joint meeting that we're tentatively planning for on December fifteenth. But that presentation would be to all entities and municipalities uh, that would be potentially petitioning the Edgerton Fire Protection District.
Okay, and I understand that there's probably gonna be a charge for any extra copies, but even and on page three, there's only five hard copies. So if it's meant for more than five people, I, I see there's an electronic one. I just.
My, my guess with that, and we can confirm, is that there will be one hard copy for each municipality. And then the electronic would be disseminated to all elected officials. And if somebody wanted to see a hard copy, then then each municipality would have a hard copy, but certainly uh, we could, we could reproduce that in a, in a in a tangible format if, if, if necessary for our people.
And then my other question is, do we, do we still have a sort of soil boring um, sample from previously on that property?
So are you referring to the current station?
Correct.
Um, so I think there, there's, there's two questions. I think you're asking two questions in one. Is there still an open environmental concern with the existing station? I think the answer to that question is yes. I do believe it is still considered an open BERT site on the DNR's website.
Okay.
However, um, this, this uh, study that will be done will, will have no connection to the current site in any way, shape or form. Um, they are simply creating, they're simply designing a building irrespective of location.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's like a building needs assessment.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks for those questions too. Bill?
Yeah, I guess I, I'm a little confused on the wording on page two. Um, that same scope of work area. Um, it, it, under design services, number one, it talks about this portion of the work would provide a review of your recently acquired property.
Yeah, I'm gonna guess that that is language that was lifted from a previous scope of work.
That was, that was, that was my guess.
Milton East Station would be my guess. Uh, that's a good catch. Yeah, we certainly don't have recently acquired property. Um, and, and, and we, you know, the conversations that I was involved in, uh, you know, was pretty clear that uh, we would be talking about a, a building irrespective of location at this time. So certainly we'll reach back out to Robert and and have him clarify that, but that's my supposition is that that's language lifted from probably the Milton East scope of service.
That, that was, that was uh, my guess, but uh, uh, yeah.
We bought a site while, while, while you were running around.
Yeah, uh, you know, it looks as if, it looks as if this document is intended to serve uh, as the contract, um, which is a little unusual uh, in terms of the acceptance. Um, the one other thing that uh, is of concern to me uh, is um, the portion, you know, I understand the idea of uh, an architecture firm uh, saying uh, essentially this is a lost leader. Uh, you know, we do this work cheap uh, in hopes of getting the, the, the big prize uh, later on. Um, the portion of the, what ends up being the contract though uh, that talks about um, chargebacks of any overages of that twelve thousand five hundred is a little bit open-ended and I, I, I don't know what uh, um, our attorney uh, thinks about that. Um, I, I would think that we would at least want to know when those overages occurred um, and what they were, so that uh, if at some point there were chargebacks to us, um, they're not going to be a surprise to us. Um, I don't wanna derail this at all. I, you know, the twelve thousand five hundred dollars is a, a wonderful uh, price. Um, but um, you know, I don't want any surprises later on. Whether Mark has any comment on that portion?
I do not. I've not been asked to review it, so I have not. So I'm sorry, I can't give you any feedback without looking at it.
I, if, if in fact, there's, there's going to be, um, you know, I, I wouldn't mind uh, a, a motion that um, that, that says we're going to um, authorize uh, the uh, the, the city to be a signatory to this. Um, but I think we need that clarification, getting rid of that language about our recently acquired property uh, and uh, also kind of specifying that um, uh, we would be made aware uh, of um, at, at what point uh, they're exceeding that twelve thousand five hundred uh, so that we have kind of a running total if there is in fact uh, a total above the twelve thousand five hundred that will be obligated to pay if uh, uh, if things don't go their way.
Now, I can't remember what we talked about as far as is this included in uh, funding that's in the overall um, capital money that we have? It, it's not, I, I mean, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, well, we would, what we would, are you, are you, uh, is your question, how would this, this twelve thousand five, five hundred be funded? Is that your question?
Yeah, and if it's part of the, oh, the, I can't remember if it, some of it was part of the capital expenditures in the consolidation budget, or I can't remember the conversations that we had.
No, this, this would be outside of that, that scope. Um, what, what we would propose is that uh, we would fund this twelve thousand five hundred with twenty twenty-one dollars, obviously, since the work would be completed in twenty twenty-one and it would be funded through our contingency uh, that we budgeted for twenty twenty-one that we have yet to expend any dollars from. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, it does.
I guess I'll, I'll go back and it, you know, it's, it's the portion under fee note number one on page four. Um, that is um, the language that i- is of concern to me and um, I, I, I guess uh, you know, I'd be uh, pleased and happy uh, as long as we had uh, Mark Schrader uh, review this and make any recommendations for uh, a change uh, before the signature is placed on the document.
Then I think we should meet again tomorrow night. As a council. And, and that's, that's fine if that's your recommendation, but then we should meet again tomorrow night to approve it, so it doesn't get delayed.
We have a fire commission meeting tomorrow night.
Yeah, we can schedule it before your fire commission meeting.
We would have to have a twenty-four hour notice.
So we couldn't do it till eight?
Can't, can't, can't we approve um, the city um, signing with certain conditions?
Bill, I think what we could do is just say that, you know, we approved the twelve thousand five hundred, not exceed twelve thousand five hundred. And that kind of locks us into how much we authorize, we can, we're willing to pay for this, this time. And then that way, if they needed more money, then they'll have to come to us for that.
I kind of feel like I would like to have the attorney take a look at this, because it really does make sense, even as I go back and look at the deliverables, five hard copies, that's how many people there are on the town board. Right? So this was theirs. I would like to have Mark take a look at it, make sure that this is set for our needs. And let's, let's, let's put that twelve thousand five hundred dollar limit on it. And then um, maybe could we just have staff and the mayor review? Rather than coming back for counsel?
Mark?
Right, so I believe the question would be, can you um, authorize approval subject to um, to city attorney approval? And uh, my approval would be subject to the things, at least so far that you've mentioned. Again, I, there, if there's more, I, I can't say right now, but one would be to to include, require including language that the twelve thousand five hundred is is the maximum amount. There's not gonna be any chargeback for overages. That's what I hear. That they're gonna be removing the language that doesn't apply, which is recently acquired property. Uh, and then uh, to require um, I guess what you want, Linda, I believe is have hard copies, what, seven hard copies? Is that what you're looking for?
Depending on how we're gonna distribute them, I guess. I don't know why I sound weird.
Well, I think that we can provide those hard copies. I think that's what Al had said. So I don't think that should, I don't think that's helpful to have that negotiated. I mean, we're gonna pay for them, right? They're gonna come back and they're gonna say, okay, then it's twelve thousand five hundred fifty, right? So.
Right, but even if we could do the clarification of one presentation, is that, who, who exactly that is going to be?
It's gonna be for everybody.
Okay, so shouldn't we have that listed in here? Because when you see one presentation to the city council or other governing body.
So what is your worry that the city council won't be presented to?
Right.
So you, you.
I, I think, I just wanna make sure that the verbiage is so that all of the people that need to look at this have the opportunity.
So do you want them listed?
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't think it makes sense to lock it in that tight, though.
Right, because what if a township, same, Linda, what if a township can't appear?
Right.
It says the city council and any other governing bodies in one presentation. So the city of, the city council is already. So the city of, the city council is already listed and then anybody else that wants to attend that.
So then do we need to include Harmony?
I, I think that's, that's up to us to do. And you know, this is a contract with the city, not with the fire commission, not with the towns. And what they're saying is they're going to make one presentation to the body that they're doing the contract with, which is the city council. And I think it's up to us as a city council to make sure all of those others, the towns and, and anybody else that might be interested knows about the meeting and can be in attendance to, to hear that presentation. You know, I, I really don't want to derail this because I think it's a, you know, a sensitive issue. And consequently, if there's any way we can go ahead and, and provide a glide path to get this thing signed as quickly as possible without having, you know, that problematic language in terms of kind of unknown chargebacks that are in number one. So it can be, I, I don't even mind if it says $12,500 and we're informed at such time as they're going to exceed the 12,500. And we get to pre-approve those further expenditures. That is absolutely fine with me. I, I think that is, is a, a solution that would work. All I don't want to have happen is if for any reason, the way this reads, if we don't go with five bugles to actually do the development, then they can come back and charge back as, as long as we go forward with someone else. And it's not a specified amount. So I just want to be alerted at such point at, at which they've exhausted the 12,500. And can indicate to us there are going to be additional charges and we can then approve those additional charges.
So Mark, how would you recommend that we proceed tonight?
Well, what I'd recommend is that it sounds that in essence, the council is in favor of approving the proposal, accepting the proposal. So I would say it would be appropriate if you, if the council had a motion to approve the, or, or accept the proposal of five bugles subject to approval of the city attorney. And then that would give me authority to then communicate with the representative of five bugles to say, under what circumstances I'll approve it. And then if they make those changes, then I, I can give my approval and then you can sign or, or Al can sign on behalf of the city, whoever it's set up for. I, I, I don't know that.
I think that's great.
Can I make that motion?
Wait a minute, because I.
Point of order, Madam Mayor.
Just, just let me finish. Let me finish. I'll take the point of order. Not everybody has been able to speak on this. So my intention was to check in. I just wanted to make sure we had a path forward because y'all were sent an email asking for questions and we didn't get any. So a lot of these questions could have been taken care of today. Or earlier in the week, but we didn't have them. So, so I want to make sure we have a path forward because it's our fault if we don't. And that would be really disappointing to me personally, after all the work that I've put in and other people have put in to get us a path forward. So. Larry, did you have a comment?
No, I do not. I'm okay with it.
Okay, Devin?
I do not have anything to add, no.
Teresa?
No questions.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I would move acceptance of the five bugles proposal, subject to the approval of the city attorney.
Second, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I have a question, actually.
Okay, who? All these, all these hands went up and then somebody said, I have a question, Ryan.
My question was for the approval of the city attorney, is he looking at all the different items we mentioned or mostly just the contract as a whole and the dollar amount? As in, he's not looking at specifically like the number of copies and stuff like that. He's not looking at pre-purchased land portion, is he? Or is that a, a, the whole document as a whole?
What I interpret that is, first of all, I will look at the document as a whole to see if there's any technical issues such as the one pointed out for the recently acquired property. Obviously, that should be removed. So I'll, I'll note that. Other than that, in terms of substantive, the only other thing I'm aware of that that needs to be addressed absent my looking at and seeing something else is that fee note number, that note number one and page four. So that, that's what I understand to be the direction in terms of my reading.
Thank you. Just want to clarify that quick.
Sure.
And Mark, when do you think you can have this done by? Out of curiosity, because we have a meeting next week, Tuesday.
Tomorrow?
Perfect. Thanks. Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
Is anyone opposed? Okay. Discussion and possible action regarding West Tower rehabilitation color selection.
I'm going to let Mark, Mark Lang or take this one.
And Mark, you should be able to share your screen if you wanted to show the wonderful options.
I have my option behind me there.
I like your options, Bill. I'm so glad you put those up there through this whole meeting.
Can we see that? Okay. Can we see the screen here?
Yes.
Well, it's part of the West Tower Rehab project. We would like to provide the contractors with the color selection for the tower in order to make the bids or provide the best information possible to the bidders to try to get the most competitive bids. We started off with several color options narrowed it down at the staff level and then at the public works, public work committee meeting last week. It was narrowed down to the three included. What we need to select are whether or not we would like a logo, colors for the shell, the bowl, the legs and the stem. The alternatives that were selected by public works are here and ranked in order. And then here's a, here's some samples of different towers and different colors, but just to try to see a, a real, a real world example. So I don't know if there's questions or discussion, but this is where we're at. The cost implications for this, unfortunately, the estimate for the tower rehab has gone up pretty substantially in the last year or two. It's seen about a 40% increase based on estimates received from KLM Engineering recently for this project. So we're looking at a total of somewhere between 540 to 590,000 for this work. It's likely to happen in 2023 at this point. There's an outside chance we could do it in 2022, but probably more likely in 2023. The funding of the, the impact on the funding for the selection of the colors doesn't change tremendously until we start adding in a logo. Adding the logo would probably add about $10,000 based on the information that we were provided from the the tower project designer. Adding the text and multiple colors, which are pretty common, adds another 10,000. But if your base price is 540,000, the tower shown here would cost 550. And if we were to add a logo, it would be around 560 or what the estimates show. I don't know if there's questions or thoughts, but trying to pick out a color to provide the bidders. Linda?
I just have a question. Did the Public Works Committee have any concerns about the size of the lettering of Milton?
That was not brought up at the meeting. It, it could be made different. I think there's some kind of standards that they use based on the tower location and the, and the viewing locations to size the letters.
I think there, there was concern about whether or not the logo would be identifiable. You know, because of location and size. You know, I don't think that there was, that, that Public Works necessarily was antilogo. It was just a matter of, you know, would you, would you know what that red blotch was? You know, that kind of thing. There was, I think, a pretty strong feeling of wanting to have the name Milton on the tower of, that, you know, people look at it and associate the name of the community with where they are. So that they did like the idea of the name of the city being part of the design.
Go ahead, Linda.
Well, I'm just going to go ahead and throw out my own opinion on this. I, I'm going to say that I like number two. But I'm the type of person, I do a lot of driving around myself and I believe that the lettering just needs to be a little bit larger. And this, the second one that you showed us, oops, I just lost you. The second one that you showed us that Lou had the, the one that was in the middle there. I just, I just feel like that's a good, it's something that you can see from a distance.
Yeah, I'll ask about the lettering, the sizing.
I'm sorry, you guys. I have to walk through my house and plug this in.
Are you, are you looking for input now? I mean, I don't want to jump ahead, but.
Yeah, no, that's.
Okay, I like, I like number three, but I could live with number two. But I thought number three brought a little more highlight to the lettering, if that makes sense, you know, with the thicker lines on the top and bottom, but that's, I can live with either one. I, I, I don't know if the logo is all that important considering the location. But that's just my input. So thank you.
Yeah, and these are rendering, so you know, it, it'll look close to this, but it won't look exactly the same. You know, these are computer images, but that's why I'm trying to show the you know, samples here too. I don't know if we want to just try to go through everybody and pick out the one you like or all you want to proceed.
I think go ahead and do that, Mark.
I mean, I do.
Mark, if you just want to call on council members and get their feedback and record it, it's fine.
Go ahead, Teresa.
Okay, I, you know, right away I was going to choose number three, but I, I do have to agree with Linda. You know, being able to see the name of the community is significant when you're driving. That, that really is what draws people when they're coming by. And you, you know, it's not up to us to be able to see the name of our community. We all know where we live. It's people outside the community that need to see the name.
Ryan, I don't know if you have any thoughts or.
I like both two and three, so I'm happy to go with either one of those two.
Devin, did you?
I, I'd be in favor of number three, as long as the lettering can be a little bit bigger.
Bill?
I'll go with three with larger lettering. I, I like that idea.
All right. So it looks like three is the selection. I don't know. A little motion or, you know, prove that, but can certainly research the lettering sizing too and making sure it's appropriate.
I don't, I don't know what your timeline is, Mark, when you were hoping to have a, have this finalized, so. I guess you have a year or something. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, we're still debating how to bid this with some of the funding sources that may exist. So there's a chance that it could occur in 2022, and if that's the case, we'd want to get it wrapped up here soon. So.
Oh, let's, well, let's see, like you, someone make a motion. I think it's, we shouldn't lay things, especially as they're getting more expensive with every breath we take, it seems.
I, I would move that we include wording in whatever RFP has issued for the water tower project consistent with design number three with larger lettering for Milton.
I would second that motion.
Okay, there is a motion and a second. All those in favor?
I.
I.
Is there anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. And there we go. I'm just going to ask you, Mark, am I going to look at that whole meeting? Okay, number 15. Oh my gosh, discussion and possible action regarding the ITA between City of Milton, the railroad, class and quality chocolates. I think we're just going to get a little bit of an update on that is what I'm guessing.
Yeah, this was on the agenda two weeks ago and we had to table it because we didn't have a final draft from WSOR. Unfortunately, we're going to need to table it again tonight. Although the attachment says final draft 10/26/2021, it is not the final draft. We are still in deliberations, I'm going to call it. I'm not going to call it discussions or negotiations, just deliberations as to what the city's actual role should be in the maintenance of that facility. There is clearly a very strong difference of opinion between the Wisconsin Department of Transportation as to what our role should be versus what Wisconsin and Southern Railroad believes our role to be. I had a meeting with the, with DOT this morning to talk about it. And we have another meeting scheduled on Friday in which Attorney Schrader is going to be involved in. I have sent an email to WSOR, WSOR today asking for further clarification as to their rationale for the inclusion of the maintenance. And hopefully we can have this wrapped up by our December 1st meeting. But that's where things stand as of today at 7:28 PM on November 16th.
Al, could you just go back a little bit? The maintenance, are we talking about the maintenance on the tracks? Are we talking about the road intersections?
Tracks.
Tracks. Okay.
Tracks and crossings.
Okay.
Yep.
It's, um.
That, that was my question was about the maintenance on the crossings.
Correct.
Yeah, and these are, although it's frustrating, they're good discussions to have. It's been a learning experience. And I think it probably has been for the DOT too. So we appreciate all the partners that are at the table and are continuing to work through this. And you know, these grants are complicated. Oh, you want us to table this? Till when?
I don't know that we, I mean, I, I'm, I'm confident that we'll have this by December 1st, but I don't know that we need to stay, stay to date.
Okay, so we can just. Is it off the table because we've talked about it or does it stay on the table because we've never motioned on it, Mark?
Oh, you're asking for a parliamentary decision, aren't you?
I am. Tonight.
What have we taken it off the table? I guess we have not, but I think it's, as a practical matter, I think just for the records clear, it's appropriate to have a motion to table it to a future meeting, whether you want to specify it or not. I think that's, that just makes for a more clear record.
All right, thanks, Mark. Larry?
I motion to table item 15 to a future meeting of the common council.
Second.
Perfect. All those in favor? Perfect. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So anyone opposed? All right. Well, we got that, this is taken care of. Discussion and possible action regarding a developer's agreement for the Journey Hill subdivision.
This is a little bit of an odd one as well. We created the developer's agreement for the Journey Hill subdivision in conjunction with the developer uh for the Journey Hill subdivision. Had those items go through review from both parties, meaning the city and the developer. Uh, had the council approve the developer's agreement. Uh, we signed that developer's agreement, sent it over to the developer, and then the developer changed the name of their development firm. Um, so instead of being Woodfield Homes, it is now Normington Excavating. It's still the same developer. And uh, and, and it doesn't change anything with their plans, but because this is a legally binding document that does assign rights and responsibilities to another legal entity. It is important that that legal entity's name is attached to who the developer is going to be. So in discussions with uh Mr. Leeson and Mr. Normington, let them know that we would need to reapprove this with the new name of Normington Excavating as opposed to Woodfield Homes. They understood, uh, so this is back on the agenda. It won't change anything, uh, any roles or responsibilities or rights uh of development or change their development plans, but is more of uh to make sure that it is legally assigned to the party that will be responsible for it. I've never seen this one before.
Well, it's a year for new things, so. Larry, any questions or comments?
No, no, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Linda?
No, thank you.
Brian?
No questions or comments.
Teresa?
No, thank you.
Bill?
Bill.
Devon?
I don't have anything.
Is there a motion?
Make motion to approve the developer's agreement with Armington Excavating.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
So anyone opposed? All right, number sixteen, check that one off, that motion carries. All right, discussion, direction, and possible action regarding North Janesville Street potential for improvements.
I think this is just a continuation of the conversation we've had the last couple of meetings about North Janesville Street and the improvements that were requested. I think Mark has some additional information in regards to, I think the main question that arose from the last discussion is um, does the city have a responsive, a legal responsibility to make improvements based on an ADA? Request. Uh, so I think Mark and Mark discussed that, and if you wanna share your findings, Mark Langer first, and then Mark Schrader can jump in if, if needs to be.
Well, we did some research into um the ADA requirements for local streets. Um, and generally, anytime there's an upgrade made to a facility that includes a pedestrian way, um, you have to also bring that pedestrian way up to um current ADA standards. So that might mean adding curb ramps if curb ramps don't exist, um installing a, a sidewalk that's wide enough if a narrow sidewalk, if a, you know, if a sidewalk that's only like two, two feet wide, for example, existed on a stretch, you, you may have to install a wider sidewalk. Um, as far as installing a new facility along an existing route, I, I, I was not able to find anything that required that. So that's kind of what, what I found. I don't know if, Mark, if you've got anything else to add to that, but.
No, other than uh just my experience in addressing uh the ADA with other municipalities, I've not seen any requirement for the installation of sidewalk in order to comply with the ADA. Uh, that's been a public policy decision on the part of the governing bodies as to whether or not they're going to install it, then as Mark indicates, if it's installed, it needs to be installed per uh ADA standards.
There, anything further that we need on this one? It was just to report back for Teresa's request. From the, is that what, or is there anything else that, that we needed to answer?
The question.
It was a question, and I think then to, uh, you know, try to resolve the issue at some point.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that I understood if there was anything else that a- any other questions, I guess, that.
No, that was the question.
Okay, um, so is that something that we wanna do? Did we decide on what, I'm, I'm sorry, we've had so many discussions about it. Is there something left to decide on this that we wanna put it on another agenda next year? Is that what we talked about? I can't remember.
I thought that we were gonna put, that we were gonna look at a way to get something out there. Whether it be sidewalk or blacktop.
Okay, so on, on a first, for, on a future agenda? Okay, all right. Okay, then I'm gonna move on to general items. Committee reports. I know there was some, something, some meetings, maybe they haven't happened yet.
Well, we have a fire commission meeting tomorrow night.
We have, we have fire commission and historic preservation, and did anybody meet Monday?
Yep, Parks and Rec went on Monday. Um, we reviewed the um events and activities for twenty twenty-two. They also approved donating some of the seed that was collected over the years to Paw Print Park, their friends group. They're going to be working on establishing a prairie there, so um they were instrumental in helping Milton with some projects in the past, like the dog park, so kind of returning the favor and um helping them with their prairie there. And we're gonna be ordering two more of the pollinator signs and having them be at the Crossridge Park Prairie and the Benlin Prairie. That was the action taken at Parks and Rec on Monday.
All right, thanks.
Can I have a, ask a question?
Of course, go ahead.
Did they um have, had, did the Parks and Rec decide whether or not they were adding any more to the prairie at Crossridge at all this year, or? Um, and then my other question is, did we end up with a large collection of seeds? So that we should be looking at uh Boy Scout Troop or somebody that could, we can do some crushing or something with?
Um, potentially, I'd have to check back with Ryan. He's been kind of managing the seed inventory, I guess. Um, not planning to expand the prairie at Crossridge this year. That might be something that we wanna look at doing um in the following year. And I don't know, Mark, if Public Works has talked about it at all. The department? I don't think so.
And we haven't talked about anything specific to that.
Okay. Um, Story Gardens also met last night, and the store that we had set up, the online store that closed last night. So if you didn't get your items ordered, let me know, we might be able to squeeze you in. Um, and then we just did a lot of updates for them on some different um activities that have happened, like some grants that we've gotten. We can't talk enough about the Packers Foundation grant that we got, right?
A few pennies.
So that was um mainly updates for, for the Story Garden Subcommittee last night.
Okay, great. All right, I think we have committee reports covered. And Teresa, what time, fire commission, is it six or seven?
Six.
Six, okay. Um, staff reports. Inka, do you have anything else?
Um, I'm continuing to work with a group of people on creating a plan for interpretive signage in the community, and we're going to be meeting with the Historic Preservation Commission tomorrow night. Um, because there's representatives from them that I'm, from that group that I'm working with. We are reviewing RFQs that we received for graphic designer to help us actually create the designs of the, of the signs, so they're just very cohesive and uh a good um display for visitors and community members to learn more about the historic assets of our community and some of the natural spaces as well.
Great, thanks. Ashley?
We have our Friends of Development Public Library book sale going on through the month of November during library hours. And we'll have the two dollar bake sale November twenty-eighth through the thirtieth. And then I just wanna give a shout out to my teen advisory board group. I met with them right before this meeting, and they filled my eye, my mind with so many ideas of what they wanna do, and it was a great meeting, and I just love that group, so just wanna give them a shout out.
Thank you. Good job, Teen Advisory Board. Okay, Jenny?
Okay, so the two thousand twenty-two election preparation is in full swing now, and the first spring election notice will be pa- published in the paper this week. And I've got an exciting update is that Rock County Clerk Lisa Tolson reached out, and she would like to host a training for poll workers um in January, pending any COVID restrictions at that point um for our city poll workers plus then surrounding communities. And then the first day for candidates to circulate nomination papers for the spring election will be December first.
And who's up for election?
It is Linda, Devon, and Ryan.
Thank you, Jenny. And who else? Oh, Chief.
Hello, everybody. I have a few things for you tonight. First, uh, update that all of our staff was trained by representatives from the YWCA on a program called the lethality assessment program. This is a empirically based procedure when we handle domestic violence calls and are working with a victim. It's a series of questions that we are, that are standardized that we ask. And depending upon the answers provided, um while we are on scene with that victim, we immediately handed them a phone with a twenty-four hour advocate and talk through, so that they can talk through with an advocate right there at that time about the potential risks that they face, and hopefully uh short cutting a path towards if that's something they wanna avail themselves. Um, so, great, some great training. It was, it's been piloted by the City of Janesville and the City of Beloit. They've had a great deal of success with it, now rolling it out countywide, and over the last two Mondays, my staff wanna do something that, that will be rolling out. The second thing I wanna mention is January is Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and I'm gonna try to put together a training probably at City Hall. Just another one of the community panels I've done in the past, where we provide a little bit of training and a little bit of of chatting back and forth with community members on questions that they might, so stay tuned for that. Um, and the third is, is on a more somber note, this has been a very tough week for people in public safety um in this county. The loss of two police officers and one firefighter. To, to lose three and such separate incidents at one time is pretty rare, so keep those law enforcement and fire people in your thoughts this week as they deal with community terms with a lot of That's all I got.
And I just wanna come into your staff and um rolling out the lethal assessment training, um, that's really important to save the lives of domestic abuse victims. Um, and I, I think in the past we've done um a proclamation around human trafficking. So, um, we'll just kind of make sure we have that on the January agenda then.
Yeah, I'll look for that. I think you're correct. I'm glad you reminded me. I'll take a look and see if I can find some language.
Yeah, I'd really like to do that proclamation again. Okay, um, who else? Uh, Kelsey? I don't know that you have a lot, but good job on the work that you did on the budget. I know that you came in a little bit late, but I also know that you were part of it, so, thank you.
Yep, and with budget approval, we'll transition into tax roll and getting all the pieces over to the county for that now, so.
All right, good job on your presentation tonight. Okay, so, is that Al? And Mark, whoever wants to go?
I, I can go, yeah. I, I just thought, wanted to thank everybody for another, uh, what I would consider to be a very successful budget season. Um, it's, these are, are things that take months and months and months uh to prepare, and this year was certainly one of the more I'm not gonna say challenging years, but, but odd years in the sense that we had staff leave in the middle of the budget preparation process, and we onboarded new staff in the middle of the budget preparation process, but it went seamlessly, and um I think it was probably two weeks ago or maybe, maybe a little bit longer. I don't remember, you know, I came to Kelsey and I said, Kelsey, I'm just gonna have to turn the budget over to you at this point because there's just too many other things that uh are, are going on, and I don't wanna miss anything. And she did an exceptional job of picking up and not missing anything, and uh you know, every time I, something would come to me at three in the morning, I would ask her the next day, and she would have the answer momentarily, and um, that's uh indicative of the type of staff that we, we want and we have, and uh so, thank you to everybody uh who was a part of the budget process, including Howie, who's you know, it's our first meeting without Howie, but he was a big part of it too, so, um, thank you, everyone, and uh yeah, on to the next one, won't be long.
Mark?
Um, so guys are picking up leaves. They'll be wrapping up here in the next week or two, kind of depending on how long it takes to get through the rest of the city. Um, they're going up to Jefferson County tomorrow for some training on calibrating the salt um spreading equipment uh prior to the snow season here. Few pavement patches taking place here in the coming week, along with some of the miscellaneous concrete repairs that you may have seen around town last week. Waste water guys are doing maintenance on clarifiers, uh sewer cleaning. Um, there's some new sampling requirements they're trying to get set up for here with the, the new permit that was issued uh for twenty twenty-two. And on the water side, the um operators have uh finished the meter change outs for this year. Like so many other issues that have come up with the supply chain uh issues going on throughout the country. Uh, meters became hard to get here, so uh those are done until next year when we can get more meters. And the LSL program, uh will be wrapping up this week, the last uh replacements for this season. And then we will see if funding's available for a coming year.
And I just wanna thank Mark for his initiative on uh replacing lead service lines um across the city, because you know, at the federal level, they're certainly um making a big push to get get these lines uh replaced, and I'm really proud that the City of Milton is kind of like already gotta jump ahead, and you know, hopefully with some more encouragement with city residents, like we can, we can get all these taken care of, so I just wanna thank Mark for that, and I know that he's worked really hard and and a lot of people did get it done, but we need some more people to get it done too.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I would just add if, if people, have people ask about the program, even though it is done this year, or the construction is done for this season. We should still encourage them to reach out so we can inventory their lines and get them in the queue if, if funding becomes available for next construction season. And hopefully those folks who could be on the front end of it um in, in the next cycle.
Yeah, maybe we can put that in the next newsletter. If, if Inka is taking lists of things to put in the next newsletter. So maybe we'll even have a fire update for the next, not the next next, but you know, whatever, is it January? We get, we get November, do we get a November water bill? Or a December water bill?
We get a November water bill, but that's already printed and sent out. It's always the odd months.
Okay, so on the next, on the January.
Can we get our, our downtown lights lit up for Small Business Saturday? Can we just light them up for that week of Thanksgiving?
They, they're going up, going up, sorry, didn't mean to drop the G there. They're going up this week. I, I'd assume they're probably done or close to being done.
Okay, I wasn't, I, I've only seen just, just part of them, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah, and they look like what's up, you know?
Yeah, and I think we always generally turn them on, on Thanksgiving or the, you know, the day before Thanksgiving or they're in, but they'll certainly be on for that weekend, yeah.
Okay, well, you know, and I don't think it would hurt if we could get them on during that week. Lot of people will be traveling early in the week too. If that's possible.
Are you saying for like next week, Monday? Or, or like, okay, yeah, I'll check with Paul and see where they're at on that.
Okay. Great, um, and I'm sorry that I lost part of the meeting, but could, can you tell me what you decided for the water tower?
Uh, we're going to keep it the same.
Uh huh. Did we vote on it? Because I lost you.
Yeah, uh, option three.
You won, Linda. Option three with big letters.
Oh, oh, well, that's okay.
Oh, thank God somebody's name got made. Okay, we'll get through this here yet. All right, here we go, team building. All right, it's, it's a two-part question. On Thanksgiving, I know you're very surprised about the subject matter. I think I'm getting predictable. I don't know. Okay, so if you could get rid of one food at Thanksgiving, if you get rid of one thing at Thanksgiving, what would it be? And you, you know, your Thanksgiving might include pepperoni pizza, right? I, I, you know, at your Thanksgiving. What food would you like to get rid of? And if you could only eat one of the dishes served at Thanksgiving, at your Thanksgiving, what would it be? So I'm going to just go first and I'm going to say, I would not cry to get rid of turkey. I don't hate turkey, but I could, I can eat Thanksgiving without turkey if I had to, right? If I was forced to make a choice. Um, and I think the one food that I just, if I, if I only could eat one food, it would be homemade, not instant. Homemade mashed potatoes and gravy. Not sure where the gravy is going to come from. I don't have a turkey, but it could be instant gravy. So um, I'm going to check my name off the list. Does anybody else want to go first? And if you don't celebrate Thanksgiving, is there, is there another meal you want to share? So Devin, Devin is on top of this.
I would get rid of the canned cranberry sauce. Something about the texture just doesn't sit well with me. Um, and if I could only eat one thing, it would be pumpkin pie.
I, I'm with, I'm with Devin. I am not a cranberry guy. I know that that is like a staple of Thanksgivings. I um, you know, I, I don't know that I would get rid of it. I just choose not to eat it. I'm guessing there must be somebody out there that enjoys it. That's why it's everywhere. Um, so you know, I don't want to take that away from those people.
But it's here Thanksgiving, so.
Yeah, yeah, but uh, the, but the, the thing that I would eat uh, just singularity, it would be uh, cheesy mashed potatoes. The mashed potatoes that you bake the cheese on top. Fantastic. So no, no cranberries for Devin and I.
Okay.
I'll go next. Um, I'm going to say those bread rolls. I, I just can't handle those things. They just, they just, you, you, you have the bread with the stuffing and I just, I can't handle those bread rolls. And dad, I'm sorry, but that's how it is. Um, what I would eat? Um, I have to say that it would be that green bean casserole. I just love it, just love it. And my, my son-in-law is an awesome cook.
Great, great. No bread for Linda. I'm surprised. I didn't see that one coming, Linda. I thought I knew you. Think you know a person. Here they don't even like bread rolls.
I'll go next.
Brian?
I'd get rid of stuffing and I'd take sweet potatoes.
Mmm.
Sweet potatoes.
Me too.
Or yams.
I like the marshmallow thing.
Uh huh.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's great.
Just a little toasted.
Brown sugar.
Teresa?
Okay, I would get rid of giblets or whatever they're called. I hate them. I hate to even look at them. So, um, and then I like um, this raspberry pretzel salad.
Oh.
It's really, it's good.
You know, someday we'll meet again and I hope someday we all get to have a meal together.
Yeah, really.
And I want that raspberry pretzel thing that you just talked about, like I.
I know. That sounds good.
Now I'm going to have to look that up. Thanks, Teresa.
Yep.
Larry?
Yeah, I'm, I'm like mayor. I, I agree with you, mayor. I, I could do without the turkey. I think what I'd rather have is a nice ham, a nice uh, sugar cured ham would be really good. But um, the one I'd eat the most is, is, is a tie between my wife's zucchini casserole. She makes a zucchini casserole that's out of this world. I love that. I could eat that all day. Probably not very good for me overall, but, or dressing with lots of gravy on top of it. Either one I could make a meal out of, so.
So you're, you're not like Ryan. We have a lover of dressing and I could do without dressing. And y'all, y'all pretty much like turkey, but Larry and I have a, have a club so far going. Kelsey?
I will join your club and get rid of the turkey. I'm all about the sides. And I would say my favorite is we do a sweet corn casserole.
Sounds really good too. I, you know, I, I haven't eaten since nine o'clock this morning, so this probably was not a good idea for me, but.
I'm just going to jump in quick because it's a good segue. I was going to say, let's pass on the sweet corn casserole. I'm not a sweet corn fan. Um, I'll, my, my most favorite thing is my wife's orange cranberry bread, which is amazing. And we only do it on Thanksgiving, so it's the only time of the year I get it. And a common refrain throughout my family, which might be valuable to you all, is gravy is not a beverage. Keep it in mind.
This is fabulous. You know I'm writing a book with all your.
Scott, just to add that in a way, uh, it's commonly mentioned that in my house at least, that mashed potatoes is just a vehicle for gravy.
I like that too.
I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to agree with Devin about that jelly cranberry sauce stuff. However, um, there are good cranberry dishes. And I like cranberries and uh, you know, we've got a recipe for cranberry relish uh, that has orange and nuts and uh, some other stuff in it that really is very tasty, so. Uh, but my favorite, uh, my favorite is pie. Um, not necessarily pumpkin. I, you know, we generally will get a variety of pies. And so, you know, there's an opportunity, um, and uh, we get some great stuff from The Elegant Farmer. Um, you know, their pies are awesome. And um, we have uh, an apple peach and an apple blueberry pie ordered for our Thanksgiving. So that's going to be my favorite.
Hmm, that sounds fabulous. Just does. You're out making us hungry.
I'll go. Um, we keep Thanksgiving very low key. And as the only daughter who eats with my parents, um, mom makes everything that I like. So um, there's nothing I wouldn't eat, but it's be a tie between we call them smashed eggs or deviled eggs or twice baked potatoes.
Your favorites? Or you're not, okay, all right, okay. I wasn't sure because I was like, I kind of like deviled eggs. I'm surprised that Ash. Well, you are a good daughter, Ashley. You get the good daughter of the year award, so. That's awesome. I don't give that out very often, so don't tell my daughter. So I think we have Inga, Jenny, Mark and Mark. Am I correct on that?
I'm going to go with the, the canned cranberry. I've never actually tried it. Um, but I don't want to, so I, I'm not going to. Um, my mom would make fresh cranberries and we, we'd eat that, but the, the cans, not so much. Um, things I, I like, I mean, I, I miss the, the grandparent Thanksgivings that we typically had. And I don't have my grandparents anymore, so I miss that. But you know, turkey, anything really on Thanksgiving is delicious, so you can't go wrong. Except the canned cranberries.
Canned cranberries.
I can go. Um, so my heated thing is definitely ju, any kind of jello with vegetables in it, like.
Oh my God, who would do that?
Yeah.
Shredded carrot. I just don't like the texture of it, but that is very popular at my grandparents.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do not, I am, do not want to insult your grandparents. I'm sorry. I just didn't know.
But, but who would put carrots in jello? It's good. It's good. I like that.
With sliced green olives on top. You're bringing back some memories now.
Okay, you're, you're just wrecking my view of all of you right now.
It's, it's, I've had, I think I've been forced to eat it since I was very little. But um, then for what I absolutely love is I am Norwegian and we have Lefsa with butter, lots, lots of butter. So that is my absolute favorite, so.
Yes.
Um, and I have finally learned how to make it, which makes it even better, so.
So you'll be bringing that in. Gotcha.
I don't know if I go there.
Well, I guess if you put an olive on it, we'll all eat it. I will not eat it. I cannot stand olives.
Olives?
Yeah, there, so.
Olive, green.
I said, I can't stand olives. So someday there is going to be a quiz. And you're going to have to connect the name with the food that the person doesn't like. So we got the two. Yeah, next team building.
There you go.
I don't really have anything that I don't like and I just like to eat all of it, so.
You are so honest. I love that.
Just remember that, Mark. Next time she asks you weird questions, be like, no, Linda, I'm so honest.
We'll send over some of that Brussels sprout casserole.
I actually love Brussels sprouts.
Oh wow.
And olives? And vegetables in jello? Is that what you're saying?
Can't say that I've had, but it, it doesn't, the more I heard about it, the less, the, the more I thought it, it might be something worth trying.
Call your wife that.
Lime jello and shredded carrots?
Oh, Mark asked, he's like, he's ready to go. I, I can't like deny Mark's chance to go here.
Hmm.
Well, similar to what was just, was talked about, one uh, dish I could do without a Thanksgiving or probably at any time in my life would be uh, cottage cheese and green jello.
Yeah.
I don't know who came up with that recipe. It was somebody rather sadistic, I think, but.
Oh, yeah.
And Jenny's family?
That's a dairy product. That's not a vegetable.
We actually have red jello and my grandma's topple side, um, red jello with cottage cheese topping on it, so.
See, I knew it. Sent enter.
Yeah.
Hey, no, that was a Walworth. I'm not ed Tony.
Yeah, for some reason, people like to put it right in the green jello. I don't know, I don't understand that, but.
That was a farmer's dish, Mark.
Yeah, it's.
My grandmother used a German grandma, so.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense because my grandma was German, so that's.
Strange. The one, the one dish I would go with is something similar as well. It would be a sweet potato casserole, which has uh, uh, marshmallows melted on the top.
Yeah, yeah. I didn't always like, like I did not like sweet potatoes or squash when I was little. And for some reason, someone must accidentally fed them to me as an adult and I, I love them now. Love it. All right, page three of the meeting. Good job, everybody. Good job. Happy Thanksgiving. I hope you all get to enjoy some time with your family. And it's all you had hoped it would be. Our next meeting is when? December 7th? No. Maybe next Tuesday if people join us. I just want to make sure I'm correct on.
Regularly scheduled common council meeting will be, would be December 7th. That is correct.
Okay. And.
You will notice next Tuesday's meeting as a potential quorum of the council meeting, but it will technically be a council meeting.
And then, um, just because I don't want to forget this, it might be noticed as a potential quorum of the Fire Commission too?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it wouldn't hurt to do so, yeah.
Just to cover all of our bases.
And what time?
What time? Yeah, that's.
Um, I believe it's six o'clock.
Were you expecting?
Oh, you're right. It is 5:30. Yeah, that, that, that was when five bugles was available. That, yeah.
Are you expecting to have a Zoom option available? I don't know if that's really conducive for this kind of a meeting.
No, no, yeah, because it's going to be like a workshop type thing. I don't know that it would work all that well.
Okay.
I, the only thing I would say about that is if you don't have your third booster shot yet, you might want to wear a mask. So I'm saying, it's a lot of COVID going around. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
Elle's seconding it. But I think I need an elected official other than myself to second that. Larry, second. Okay, all those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
Hi.
Anyone oppose? All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.